Good evening. It is five thirty P M on Tuesday, May twenty first, two thousand and twenty four, and this regular meeting of the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall, eleven twenty-three West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am Chairman John Hastings presiding. Also present are Mo's Dunkle, Grant Simmons, Wayne Benner, Ivan Remar, and Scott Torpey. And City Attorney Darryl Fluke is with us remotely, and we will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Darren, I'm guessing you probably didn't see the amended itinerary here, so we're expecting this to be a really long meeting tonight.
Well, I'll just ask my wife to send some provisions up here to the home office.
Are there any general announcements from commissioners? Yes.
Well, I've got something just.
Yes.
Thought it was interesting. Over the fifties weekend, I parked over in the Panhandle Bank parking lot. I walked down to the Image Maker, back around through the cars and back. Today, I walked six hundred and twenty-three more steps than that, just parking at Costco and walking through Costco. Just to give you an idea, people complain about having to park away.
Play about the parking, but not.
Down there, people will walk forever just to.
Interesting, interesting observation. How about city staff? Any announcements, general announcements or anything? Do we know? Does anybody here know? I was not at the last joint meeting working on the comprehensive plan. Do we have the next one scheduled?
I got an update from the mayor when I walked in, so.
Okay.
You're right.
Pardon?
We have another one planned, don't we?
No.
Are we?
No, what? Talking to the mayor, the mayor said that what he wants to do is have the council give them all their
Whatever.
Whatever they want for updates.
Changes, yeah.
Changes, whatever. Put it all into one packet and then get it to us just so we can review it.
Okay.
But by June, he wants to take that to the city council meeting and get for approval.
Approval.
All right.
Okay.
Move it along.
Yeah, and whether those get incorporated before or at that meeting or not, but yeah. We can incorporate them right at the meeting if we have to.
Okay, no, that sounds good.
Commissioners roundtable is what we're doing?
Well, we, uh, no, this is the, uh, just general announcements right now. We'll get to the roundtable in a moment.
Cool.
Okay. Uh, it sounds like that is the end of general announcements. So the next will be approval of the meeting or the minutes from our last regular meeting held, really? March fifth, two thousand and twenty-four? That long ago? I knew it had been a while.
So move.
We have a motion? Do we have a second? Second? All in favor? Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. And then, uh, before we adjourn, commissioners on the roundtable, anything else that anybody wants to bring up and talk about?
Yeah, on the roundtable?
Yeah, yeah, now we're in the roundtable, just general discussion about anything you'd like to bring up.
Yeah, I have a question, and I don't know whether staff can answer it or you or the mayor. Uh, seeing as how the P and Z, uh, planning is a bit understaffed at the moment and kind of under a lot of pressure. Is there any reason somebody bringing in an application to the city of Sandpoint can't utilize and non-city employee planner, like somebody from Sewell Engineering?
Yeah, can somebody be hired as a contract city planner essentially?
Contractor planner to do the plan check.
Yeah.
You know, a basic plan check and, and, uh, you know, I'm, I'm yes, cannot be done.
And city staff can chime in at any time that you wish, if you're aware, but I know brief conversations with the mayor is he told me he would be reviewing those because he is licensed to do such. He said he would be reviewing those until somebody has been hired. And do we have anybody hired? I was thinking that I'd heard we did. Do you, anybody know? No?
Yes.
No, yes.
No, yes.
Meeting, last meeting.
Saturday.
At the last meeting, uh, there's associate planner or the assistant, uh, they have hired a girl. She will be starting in I think it's July. Is that correct? What? Okay, I think it was July, he said. I didn't have my notes with me from the meeting.
Gotcha.
Because she was still back finishing up some schooling and that they were also doing a background check on a planner, but he would not mention anything more than that.
Okay. Do you know, Darren, just out of curiosity, uh, with that question, is there any kind of, uh, legal difficulties if the mayor were to also serve as that interim review of city, any permit applications that came before the city?
Mister, uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, thank you for the question. I'm not sure I'm actually the right person to answer that. Um, I will tell you that, you know, oftentimes cities hire people like me, um, to fill in and help out. Um, and particularly the building department often hires, um, people who have expertise in things like structural engineering and structural review, um, to help expedite and facilitate, uh, the review of applications, but um, I guess it, the, the short answer is that it really depends on what it is that's being reviewed. And there needs to be a real, a very, uh, formal agreement between the city and the consultant.
Okay.
If that makes sense. I mean, I, you can't just, uh, ask somebody at Sewell or, or Glahy to come on over and, uh, you know, look at a couple of applications.
Correct, yeah. And it certainly could be somebody remote if we needed, if we preferred to have somebody not so integral to city events that might be going on, but I don't know if that's an issue or not.
Did we lose our building inspector?
Yes.
Christine's gone, but Pete's picking it up.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah. Yeah, for me, Joe.
Any, uh, mother general discussions? From anybody?
So, uh, Mr. Chair, um, I think city staff floated a couple potential dates for the next comp plan business, so from what I understand, that may not happen. The official word will come out.
That's what it's sounding like to me.
Gotcha. All right, so we'll just wait and
Yeah.
see here, et cetera. All right.
Yep.
One more thing, Mr. Chairman?
Might have more at the next city council meeting.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, originally, uh, way back when, when there was, seats were filled, um, I had brought up, uh, the things about the Airbnbs and, um, uh, she got me all the information, uh, on how it was based on, uh, I thought ten percent of the population or something like that, or one percent? Anyway, um, so I don't see that that being, that changing for any time soon. The reason I bring this up is that more and more articles I'm reading, surprisingly, the state of Florida is trying to get legislation to mandate Airbnb's so that cities can, the cities in Florida as well as the state can say no. And without argument, and that's surprising from a state like Florida, which, you know, usually pretty much, uh, you know, uh, rights advocate. And, uh, so, um, yeah, now places like Florida, they're having a lot of problems with the insurance rates going off the charts. I mean, you know, they're up to thirteen to eighteen thousand dollars for a small, you know, normal-sized home per annually. Um, so the people that have the Airbnb's are probably going to be selling them like there's none of them are.
Oh, that'll be interesting.
Yeah, well, yeah, so it goes up in one direction and back down the other, but, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm, what I'm stating is that as long as I'm the commissioner and I can have any say in the matter or hope with it, uh, I think control of Airbnb's in the city of Sandpoint, uh, needs to be something we need to keep and, uh, we need to be attentive on. Uh, we don't have anybody that oversees it legally. I mean, there's nobody driving around checking to see
Enforcements and.
Enforcement, yeah, is, is, is maybe an issue. I don't think anybody needs to be hired for it, but, uh, but at the same time, uh, again, when we went to these comprehensive plan meetings over and over and over, was brought, was brought up by various constituents as well as comments on it was the feel of Sandpoint, the thing, the heritage of Sandpoint and everything else. Um, and, uh, so keeping that in mind, and at the same time realizing that Sandpoint is now what Tahoe was twenty-five years ago or Aspen forty years ago, uh, growth is going to come. I mean, but, uh, I think if we can do our best to make a real, oh, and on that note, where do we get, maybe you can, where do we get our parking places required for units? Let's say on a two-bedroom apartment unit. Now, I, I talked to some old planners, that could be out of the loop, but they're saying that they thought it was one point eight. So essentially, two parking places you would need for a two-bedroom apartment. Because we approved or are going to approve a hundred and twenty unit down by Mountain West Bank.
Hundred, hundred two.
A hundred and two with a hundred and two parking places.
Yeah, yeah.
That's one parking place per unit, and I was told there are two bedroom units. I haven't seen the plan, so I was just told there are two bedroom units. And if there are two bedroom units, I don't think that's going to work at all.
I know that, um, a lot of those parking, uh, requirements were reduced or even eliminated in the name of affordable housing. Because they
By the city Sandpoint.
By the city of Sandpoint.
You know what it is now?
I do not.
Yeah, yeah. Is there any way to possibly reverse that before the poop hits the fan?
That would be a city council decision, but, but part of the deal was too, is that particularly in a location like the one by Mountain West Bank, there is an assumption, whether it's accurate or not, that, um, a lot of people are foregoing automobile traffic and they are choosing to commute by bicycle. Now, I mean, they're saying.
I'm gonna go sell my car and buy some seeds on the way home, but, uh, yeah, sure, yeah, that's gonna happen. I mean, it's, it's a beautiful utopian thought, but.
But with, but seriously, with a lot of affordable housing and when we look at, um, um, entry-level workforce, they truly are traveling by bike. There is a lot of people who travel exclusively by bike in this town. Uh, and that's, of course, when you have to live in town, close to those service industry jobs where you might be working, but.
Mr. Chairman, I can speak to that a bit if you'd like.
Please.
Um, I'm just looking at the, um, parking ordinance right now. It's something I often do for fun. And it looks like, um, apartments, duplexes, townhouses, or multifamily dwellings. The, um, parking is related to the square footage of the unit. And so twelve hundred square feet is the breakpoint, um, where lower than, less than twelve hundred square feet, you need one parking space per unit. More than twelve hundred square feet, you need one point four per unit. Um, and it is true that, you know, in, in planning in general, there's, um, there's a move to try to, you know, not overpark the city and overpark developments because parking is expensive. Some jurisdictions, um, have even gone so far as to, um, mandate that parking be decoupled from the rent of a, of an apartment unit such that if you don't need, um, or want to own a car, that you shouldn't have to have the cost of the parking space built into your rent. And so like in Seattle, for example, in certain overweight districts, they require that the parking and the, the rent be decoupled and that you rent your apartment separate from your parking space. Um, so that you, you're not forced to rent parking, um, if you don't need it. Just a thought.
Yeah, very interesting idea.
Considering that we have four solid months of winter.
Yeah.
About one-third of the year. Unless you got a fat tire bike and you don't see that many running around town.
Yeah.
An electric.
And be using a car, not only are you going to be using a car, but if these plans, I didn't, did not see the site plan on that. But if there isn't a provision, I know the city Sandpoint used to have a revision for snow storage. So when you designed a parking area, you had to have snow storage. If the, if we, you know, the snow storage is inadequate, then you're all, again, losing some parking places around the periphery. Um, yeah, I think that, I think you're gonna have problems down there. And then by the time we got the problems, just like the Costco that's built next to our house, you know, once you realize it's a Costco, it's too late.
Yeah.
Bring it up.
Yep, and again, that would be a, obviously a city, I mean, a city council decision if they wanted to change that, but I know that uh, parking requirements were relaxed and it was done so in the name of affordable housing.
Looks like the existing parking regulations were adopted in, uh, twenty eighteen. For our point of information.
Alrighty. Commissioners, any other general discussions you would like to?
Is there, um, is there a current, uh, is there a growing log of applications?
Mr. Chairman, is that a question for me?
Be anybody who has the information.
Anybody.
Uh, Commissioner Hastings, you're referring to, uh, Mo's, you're referring to the S T R waiting list?
Yeah.
Yes, we do have a log. Last I heard, it was at sixteen on the waiting list for that. But, um, a staff member could verify that. I believe Garrett is the one that is handling that right now.
Two since March.
It's fourteen, man.
Along with Kelly.
Yeah, I remember numbers.
Okay, and is that anything, Darren, that has come your way? Any of those?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, we've, uh, had our hands full just taking care of the, uh, land use applications that the city has in front of it.
Okay, thank you. And just out of curiosity, uh, while we're on the top topic, I know we got the heads up that there will be have a a major application before us on our June twenty-first meeting, I believe it is. Um, is there a way that any of that information can be in our hands earlier than normal, so we have more time to digest it?
I assume that question is for me, and I'm gonna say heck no. We're battling as fast as we can. We're, we will definitely get the staff report out to you. Um, I, maybe, and maybe this is the point where I should say that Jason did ask me to one, send his regards to the commission. Um, he's, he regrets he couldn't be here tonight. He had another conflicting meeting. Um, but two, to kind of walk you through, um, just the list of things that we're working on, um, so that you know what's happening in the city. So if that, if this is the appropriate time, Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to do that now.
I'm seeing a lot of nods of yes from commissioners and staff that that would be a useful thing to do.
Okay, um, great, and I'll, I'll touch on the application that's being referred to, uh, on when we get there. Let me go ahead and share my screen for a minute. I just want to share the tracker with you so you know what we're working on. And that's not it. Looks like you're seeing that. This is just the tracker we use internally to log in applications and, uh, keep track of where they're at in, in real time and who's working on what. I say we're in a, um, we're in a difficult situation right now just because the, the department is so understaffed. Um, losing Amy and Sarah at the same time, um, has been, you know, difficult and I, many of you know that I was doing a similar function to this three, four years ago for the city, um, but the department was in a much different, um, sort of disposition at that point. You know, at that point, um, Amanda Wilson was there and, and Sarah Gilmore, and they could handle a lot of the day-to-day things that, uh, came up as applications were submitted. You know, a lot of the administrative type functions, making sure that applications are taken in uh, and that they're responded to in a timely fashion and that once they're deemed complete, um, that we invoice the applicants and then get them into the, the regular calendar of, uh, review. And so all of that now is, is sort of falling to my team, which is me and, um, one other individual that, that works for me, Jacob, some Nina Schaefer. And it is a little bit difficult for us to keep track or, I should say, not to keep track, but to stay on top of all that's happening, um, with just the two of us, so. Um, that said, you know, I have to acknowledge that, um, I think we're a little behind on some of the applications that have been submitted and that are pending right now. Um, and I won't get into those details. We are, um, kind of chewing our way through that backlog and getting up to date. Um, so I just give you all that as a bit of a prelude as we go through these, uh, applications that you see here on the screen. So, um, the first one here, um, P S, uh, twenty-four oh four, that's Tribute. Um, that is the large multifamily project situated behind the Super One, um, off of Warrior. I'm sure you all know where that's at. Um, it has two applications pending. They're doing a, um, this one is a short plat, which is an administrative review. They're doing that just to combine the lots that the project is going on. It's not a big deal other than it, you know, like everything else, it has to get taken care of. The bigger deal for Tribute is that they have submitted for a building permit. Those are two very large buildings and those are under review right now by the building department. And then the planning team, which is me in this case. Um, the next item on the, on the list here is a, again, another short plaid, and I, I should say you'll see a lot of short plats. These are an administrative review, um, for lot splits or parcel splits that result in less than four lots and don't require new infrastructure, primarily new roads. Sometimes we require curb gutter and sidewalk where that's lacking, um, but it's a truncated, um, process for plating very small subdivisions, and you see a fair bit of that in Sandpoint. Just one, because there's not a lot of greenfields, but two, because there's a fair number of, uh, just smaller lots that are eligible to be split, you know, one or two times. Um, so this is a, uh, short plat that is off of Highway Two in Michigan. I think it, um, it really is just dealing, this one's a cleanup of a situation where we've got a building over a lot line. And I think the owners are ready to sell and we need to clean up the situation, so no big deal. Um, here on line seven, Big Toy Condos, you're probably all familiar with this, is, this is the, uh, large, um, garage slash storage condominium project that's out on, uh, Schweitzer Cut Off um, north of the airport. A large portion of that is built, as I understand it. Um, what we're working on on the planning side is again a short plat. Um, and basically, in this case, it's a condominium plat because each one of those storage units that are being constructed are intended to be sold to private owners. Um, and so in that case, you'd have private ownership of a single, uh, very discreet space within a much larger project, which requires a condominium plat, and so that is, uh, underway. The notice has gone out and we are, uh, we've written the staff report, and I think it's just a matter of, you know, waiting till the notice period is up and that one will be on its way. Uh, this is the application that you were, that was referred to just a bit ago, fifty-six Bridge, um, which, as you all know by now, is the, um, replacement of the, um, Edgewater Resort, um, with the new hotel and conference center. We can't talk about it, uh, because we'll do that at a public hearing. I know this is a public hearing, but this is not properly before you. I can just tell you that um, we have an application for a conditional use and we will get you that staff report as soon as we possibly can so that you have time to look at it. It is a big complicated application. I think, um, discussions with the applicants are going well and, uh, you know, we're, we're confident that you'll have a good hearing on that on, um, June eighteen, and, uh, just as a side note, I will be up there in town for this hearing and then the city council hearing later that week as well. Um, the next item below that is also related to fifty-six Bridge. There is a, um, I don't, I, I guess a minor issue or a code compliance issue with a, a front setback, um, that, um, requires a variance to go through. Um, you know, again, we'll talk much more about this at the public hearing, but, um, just suffice to say that what you all will see on June eighteenth is an application for a conditional use and then an application for a variance at the same time. We'll handle those items concurrently. Um, so it'll all make sense when you see it in front of you. Um, O'Connell Estates, formerly known as Cookman Estates, this is off of, uh, Woodland, um, out north of the airport. Previously approved preliminary plat, um, they did final plat a portion of that and now are looking at, um, uh, different concept that they want to work on, and so we're working them through the, the, um, process on that. Turnstone, um, I'm not sure. Let's see, this is a, um, preliminary plat that will be coming in front of this body. So I won't say too much about it other than say it's a, you know, single-family residential project, larger lots. I think the lots all come in around ten thousand square feet, give or take. Um, it is on Ontario, across from the county facilities, um, near Highway Two. I forget how many lots that is. Um, it's maybe, I don't know, a dozen lots or so. Single-family lots. Burn Cloud, that's not anything we need to talk about. This was another short plat on Florence. Basically, it was, uh, two lots being reoriented, um, again into two lots, but it's a very particular thing that Sandpoint Code allows for. Um, and, you know, makes some sense up there where that is situated. The Bonner County Fairgrounds, uh, readiness, uh, center replat, I believe this body saw and recommended, or I should say heard and recommended to the city council. That will, um, finally be going to the hearing before the council on their first meeting in June, which will be June five. Um, you recommended approval, um, that, that recommendation is moving forward to the, the city council. And, uh, don't anticipate any big issues there. Executive Estates at Lincoln in Maine, I'm afraid I don't have any information on that for you at this time, waiting on the applicant. Um, short plaque, I don't know what that is. As we get down into this log, uh, you can see things become a little bit more nebulous, so. Uh, another short plat, another replat. Replay, replay. I think that is most of the big stuff that, uh, I have to, um, to update the Planning and Zoning Commission on. Um, oh, this, uh, West Point is maybe the last one you might be interested in. I think you did hear this, um, as the commission recommended approval to the city council, city council heard it, and then subsequently, it was discovered that one of the lots didn't, uh, comply, um, with the zoning standards, and so we're working with the applicants and the council to, to get that final platted. Not a big change from what you saw. I think you approved a four-lot preliminary plat. Um, one of the lots didn't have the minimum amount of frontage, and so, um, we're looking at how to process a final plat with just three lots instead of the four that you recommended approval of. And then, uh, just finally, the, um, twelve-hundred turbine is the, um, the hair facility out by the airport, and they are looking at just reconfiguring, um, their property holdings out there. Um, their parking spills over onto a, a adjoining lot that they own, and so this is a plat to just clean that up. It is, uh, it's been impacted, um, or influenced by the, uh, the rebuild on, uh, Great Northern Road, and so the holdup here has been, um, what, uh, what's going to be required for right away to build that future, um, expansion in Great Northern Road. So, um, I think all this other stuff is just stuff that we're, uh, tracking because people have contacted us. You know, there's the usual building permits that are pending and, um, those sorts of things, but that's kind of a snapshot of all the stuff we're working on, um, right now. And, um, you know, as long as we don't get into like specifics on these applications, if you had questions, I could, um, certainly take those now.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much for the update. And, uh, yeah, probably not the appropriate time for detailed questions, so that'll be in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, commissioners or city staff? Or recent arrivals? Uh-oh.
Uh, the only one is the Executive Estates of Lincoln in Maine. That's, uh, not quite on the corner.
One sec.
My one state, who you are.
Yeah. Brandon Staglin, I'm a civil engineer for the city. Uh, Executive Estates at Lincoln in Maine is not quite on the corner of Lincoln in Maine. It's the southeast corner, but, um, there's a large undeveloped property there. You might have noticed that it got cleared uh, last year.
Yeah.
That process, uh, they're kind of on hold. I'm not sure they presented exactly what development they want to do, but it's probably a large lot, multifamily type thing. So you'll see that coming forward at some point, I'd imagine.
Thank you. Anything else? If not, with no further business on the agenda, this meeting is now adjourned at six PM. Thank you all for attending.
Thank you, Joe.